This is the September 5th, 2019 hearing of the Health Committee. I am Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chairman of the Committee. We'd like to welcome all of you for joining us this evening. We are also in attendance, joined by Bill Hemery, Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Clark from the 14th District.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Cohen from the 1st District.
And Mr. Chair.
And I don't see anyone else here yet. From the Office of Council President, we have Michael Huber, Kalen Young, Rebecca Simmons, City Council Attorney, Ken Rubens from the Office of President of the President, Nicholas Blandy from the Mayor's Office, Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office, and the Committee's staff person is Mr. Matt Peters. On the agenda this evening is Council Bill 19-0410, the Baltimore City Trauma Responsive Care Act. Before we begin, I would like to note that the Committee will not be voting on the bill this evening. This will be an opportunity to hear from city agencies and from the public, and we will reconvene at a later date to be announced to consider amendments to the bill and vote on the bill. So just want to let folks know that. Now, I would like to turn it over to the primary sponsor of the legislation, Councilmember Z. Cohen from the 1st District, for opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to really everyone who has helped to contribute to this legislation. This bill came out of a hearing that we held in the Education and Youth Committee where we heard from a group of students after a shooting that occurred at Frederick Douglass High School. And the message that we, the Council, were left with from the young people was that we are not doing enough as a city to support their needs and to support their well-being. That after the shooting occurred, there was a crisis response team that went into Frederick Douglass, but it was sort of a miss because the young people felt like they didn't relate, like they didn't know the students themselves, and sort of like they were being gawked at. And so the charge for the Council and for us was, as a city, all of our agencies need to be better at supporting the needs of our children. We know this has been a particularly violent time in our city, that trauma is impacting all of us across Baltimore disproportionately in communities of color, and that we should not disentangle the legacy of white supremacy and historic racism from the way that trauma is disproportionately felt in communities of color, but that this is a moment for all of our city to heal together. We know that 56% of children in the city of Baltimore have experienced one or more major traumas. That could include gun violence, that could include homelessness, that could include having a family member that's incarcerated. And we know that, as a city, we have not always served our children well enough. And so that is the context behind this bill. What this bill does is it creates a work group led by a partnership between the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, Community, and the City Council to identify goals and metrics to reduce trauma and harm across Baltimore. This bill spells out, there are four young people who will be part of that group, there are some educators, some practitioners, there are a number of folks who are named in that group. Additionally, this bill calls for each agency to select two representatives to join together with, again, Community and our Health Department, and to receive advanced training in the brain science of trauma and how to effectively respond to it. Additionally, those agency representatives are charged with going back and working within their departments to train and teach the science and the need for our agencies to be more responsive. And then finally, they are also charged, within this bill, with rewriting policies and procedures within each city agency in order to stop re-traumatizing our most vulnerable populations. And I'm going to give a quick example because the gentleman is in the room right now. But in one of the communities that I represent, in Bayview, we have an incredibly diverse, vibrant neighborhood, large Latino population. We had a phenomenal director of the Maura M. Crossman Rec Center who had built relationships with children, with families, at a time when many of our immigrant communities feel not only threatened by the forces that we all are dealing with on the ground here in Baltimore, but additionally by the federal government, by ICE, by very unclear and uneven immigration policies. And so this gentleman was able to build trust and relationships and community within this rec center. And then, a few months ago, he was transferred to a different rec center. And what we saw in Bayview is that unfortunately, there wasn't a succession plan, there wasn't someone else there who spoke Spanish, and so all of that trust that had been built fell apart. And we, the city government, participated inadvertently, because it wasn't intentional, it wasn't anyone's fault, but we, the city government, participated in re-traumatizing our own folks. And I say that with enormous respect for Wreck and Park, which is an agency that is underfunded, understaffed, and does exceptional work, but that these are the types of policy decisions that we, as a city, have to stop making if we're going to see a real reduction in violence and a real reduction in crime, and a city where young people not only survive but can thrive. That we need to reinforce our own capacity, our own human capital, we need to be there for each other, and we need to be more supportive. I'll also say that, in closing, there's been a tremendous groundswell of not only city government, but also outside groups, many of whom are in this room tonight, who have said, "We've been doing this work for a long time, we haven't been recognized for it, and we need to do it in partnership. We can't continue to operate in silos, we can't have city government doing one thing over here and this nonprofit doing something else over here. We need to be in coordination and in collaboration." And so I'm grateful to all of the groups, and I'm not going to name them, but there are many that are here with us tonight. And I think that this is truly a moment for healing across our city. And so with that, I'm really excited and grateful for all the work that's gone into this bill. And while I know that we're not going to be voting tonight, I am most looking forward to hearing from our agencies, our practitioners, and the public about how we can make this work stronger. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And before we move to agency reports, I do want to carry on the tradition the Councilman Cohen has set in the Education Committee by opening the hearing with testimony from a young people, because we definitely need to do a better job at elevating their voices across the city. So I'd like to welcome up Damani Thomas. Is she here? Perfect. Okay. He, I'm sorry. Damani is a senior at Frederick Douglass High School who has been very central to drafting this bill. And the floor is yours.
Hello. Oh, hello. Just, y'all can't hear me, right? How y'all doing today?
Doing good.
My name is Damani Thomas, and now I'm a senior at Frederick Douglass High School. Working on this bill was an amazing experience for me and my comrades. I worked closely with Mr. Cohen on trying to help our city's youth to overcome so many obstacles that could potentially ruin their lives forever. As a teen in Baltimore, I have seen and done so many things that have changed my life for better or worse without me knowing the impact of my actions. However, I still strive for greatness throughout my life. One of the biggest challenges that I had to face throughout the summer was my social anxiety, which often holds me back from so many opportunities that I regret missing. Trauma and its effects are real, and we never know when its impact can be felt in our lives. Me personally, I've always believed that the youth have been the future for many generations to come. And with the help of my AP teacher, Mr. Parsons, I got the opportunity to show everyone that I really care about our city. Being interviewed and voicing my opinion really helped me overcome my social anxiety because it made me, oh, it made the feeling of emptiness go away, and it made this, it gave me a sense of relief. Throughout the majority of the summer, my life consisted of working on the bill and coming up with new ideas for the newer generation to come. I really appreciate everything that has happened throughout the months. The children of Baltimore need a voice that meets the expectation of every child of every shape and form. To me, it's not about the past, rather, it's about the actions that move you toward a better future. Throughout Baltimore schools, daycares, and homes, there are so many stories that do not reach the public eye, so individuals do not get the support they so desperately need in order to just survive, but to also thrive. It is true that most people don't know where to find help because of the way certain communities are set up. It's almost like the opportunity has to present itself to them, and by the time, it's already too late. With this bill being passed, it could possibly give every community in Baltimore an opportunity to express their pain and their power like I do every day. Over the years, I haven't been more serious about anything close to this because I never thought that I had a voice. To be a part of something that matters to the people of Baltimore has changed my mindset, oh, has changed the mindset and that of my family for years to come. I'm so grateful to be a part of this bill, and I am proud of the work that is being done on behalf of the young people in this city, and I really encourage you to pass the bill.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all right. Thank you for that. All right. So this bill was referred to 16 agencies. I think the best way to do this is to ask the agencies, if you have additional comments beyond your written testimony, to just come up. If I show my hands.
So Liam Davis, Legislative Affairs Manager, DOT. I just wanted to add that, you know, we mentioned in the bill report that we thought, you know, our school crossing guard program would be impacted, likely be impacted by what the task force comes up to. But what I also learned was that our TEOs, our traffic enforcement officers who, you know, issue tickets, and I think our tow truck drivers have undergone trauma training in the past. So there is precedent within our agency, particularly when it's employees who are interacting with residents and you're dealing with stuff where, you know, maybe they got towed and that's $500, and that's really going to set a good amount of people back. So, again, there's some precedent here.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Michelle Wertsberger. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. Although we are not specifically named in the bill, we did not provide you with a written bill report, the Commissioner asked me to come here tonight and express his support for the bill and applaud Councilman Cohen for his leadership on this topic. Again, since we're not named in the bill, although we're not named in the bill, Commissioner Harrison has pledged his support, not only for the intent of the bill, but will comply with the requirements therein. He understands that the Police Department and its members deal with trauma in two very different ways. First, there are officers typically are not interacting with people on their happiest of days. Many of the folks they encounter in the midst of trauma or suffering from some previous trauma. Our officers need to know how to approach victims in a way that recognizes the effects of trauma and facilitates a productive interaction with law enforcement. The second side of that coin really is, since our officers are interacting with folks on their not happiest days, they are seeing things that most people shouldn't be seeing, and they themselves are being traumatized. And because of that, the Commissioner has already identified two people who understands both sides of those coins, and that is Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown and Vernon Heron, who is the Director of Officer Health and Wellness. Director Heron is here with me as well. They will comply with the requirements herein. And the other thing, just kind of to note, is that through the consent decree, we're required to rewrite all of our policies, create standard operating procedures, and all of those things will be done with this in mind as well. Mr. Chair and Honorable Members of the Committee, Director Heron and I both have other commitments tonight, so we're not going to say for the full hearings, but if there are some questions now, we're free to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, and thank you, Michelle and BPD. Just so folks at home understand, the Baltimore Police Department, despite the many efforts of this Council and some of our friends in the state legislature, is actually not a city agency. They're a state authorized agency, so when we legislate city agencies, we are not able to legislate the Baltimore Police Department. However, Commissioner Harrison and I had a conversation, and he really understands that so much of what our officers respond to is actual, is actually mental health crises. Whether citizens know it or not, a lot of times when they call 911, we're actually calling on someone who is experiencing maybe a bout of schizophrenia or is struggling with substance use disorder, addiction. These are really health and public health issues, they're not law enforcement issues, but still, it's critically important that our officers are able to identify and differentiate between what is true criminal behavior versus what is a mental health crisis. And so I'm really glad and I appreciate your leadership and the Commissioner's leadership in your willingness to sign on and support this legislation regardless of not being a city agency. I think it shows some real maturity within the department and some leadership that we've lacked, frankly, but we are excited about Commissioner Harrison and what he is bringing to Baltimore.
All right. So I was actually advised that we should go to each agency just for the record, so if there are additional comments, just let us know. We're going to start with the Department of Law. The report is favorable with comments?
I have a change.
Okay, perfect. The Department of Planning, report is favorable?
We stand by our report. Thank you.
Mayor's Office of Employment Development, report is favorable?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, report is favorable? All right.
Stand by the report.
Stand by the report? Okay. Oh, yeah, please use the microphone for the record. Yeah, it is televised.
Unless you're in the back room.
Unless you're in the back with Jason. Parking Authority, favorable?
Yes, PABC supports the bill.
Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, report is favorable with amendments. Is there a representative here this evening? Okay, we'll cover that at the work session. Fire Department, report favorable? Okay. Finance Department, report is favorable with comments?
We stand by our report.
Department of Public Works, favorable with comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We would just like to point out, we had some questions and concerns regarding more clarity in the bill, which you have in our report, and we're looking forward to that being considered as we work forward on the bill. We certainly support the concept, and as a large agency, we're just wanting to better understand how we go about being responsive to the intent of the legislation and how best to fulfill the requirements that are, that will be expected of us through the task force. So I thank you.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development, report is no objection?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We stand by our report.
The DOT. Health Department, report is favorable?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is DePaul Nibber. I'm the Director of Legislative Affairs for the Baltimore City Health Department, and I am joined by our Assistant Commissioner for Chronic Disease Prevention, Mr. Greg Cilio. First off, I'd like to thank the sponsor of this bill, Councilman Cohen and his staff, for their hard work in developing this bill and their dedication to our city's youth. Trauma and its disastrous multigenerational, multi-generational effects on our communities is something that has only recently gained widespread attention, yet it is the main driver of nearly every evening news story we absorb, whether it's violence or poor school performance. In a 2013 survey of Baltimore City youth, nearly half of the participants surveyed, about 456 kids, had symptoms consistent with post-traumatic stress disorder. In keeping with these findings, it is completely unremarkable that 12% of the city's high school youth did not go to school on at least one day because of safety concerns. 32% had felt sad almost every day for two weeks or more in a row in the last 12 months. And 16% had seriously considered suicide in the last 12 months. Understanding the tremendous burden facing Baltimore City residents, particularly our youth, the Office of Youth and Trauma Services housed at the Health Department has trained over 3,100 city employees, community members, small businesses, and nonprofits in a trauma-informed approach. What this means is an upstream public health approach that realizes the prevalence of trauma, recognizes and understands the role that trauma plays in the lives of those we serve, and engage, including our colleagues, by the way, and puts our knowledge into everyday practice, resists re-traumatization in our homes, communities, and systems of care. We once again applaud Councilman Cohen for shifting the city's focus to a trauma-informed approach. We have long needed a unified approach in addressing youth trauma, and this bill does exactly that. The Baltimore City Health Department urges a favorable report.
Thank you. Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We stand by our report.
Department of Recreation and Parks?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jenny Morgan from Recreation and Parks. We stand by our report. However, I have a colleague here who's, would like to testify. Israel?
All right.
Have you stated your name?
Huh?
Did you state your name?
All right. Awesome. Well, my name is Israel Nunez. As she mentioned, I am the current Recreation Center Director for Virginia S. Baker Recreation Center in Patterson Park. Previously, I was the Center Director for Maura Crossman Recreation Center, as well as Joseph Lee Recreation Center in both Greettown and Bayview communities, respectively. I have been with the agency for the last two and a half years, and I have been blessed with being the, being placed in the Southeast District of Baltimore City, which, as most of you may be aware, especially within recent history, happens to be our most densely concentrated area of the city in regards to immigrant and refugee communities. And so that is very vast majority of the population that I have serviced over the last two and a half years have been families from countries that are coming directly from other, from other countries as well. So a lot of the experience that I have specifically related to the community that I've worked with has been direct lines in regards to trauma, particularly within our Hispanic and African and Latin American populations in Baltimore City. So I don't have any formal words prepared or speech of any kind, I just did want to offer my own support for the bill in question. I did have an opportunity to speak directly with Councilman Cohen regarding some of the terms of the bill, and I did feel as though there were three particular areas that I felt were beneficial, not only to Recreation and Parks as an agency, but specifically to the community, the city of Baltimore and the communities that we represent as well. The first of which being, I believe that the opportunity for the mandatory training to be mandated across the city, particularly within our own agency, is very much needed. And I think it helps not only for the opportunity for us to serve the communities well, but I think it also allows for the opportunity to serve our staff well. I think a lot of times what gets missed is that for many of us in the recreation field or in the schools, we're on the front lines a lot more than we realize. And when these kids walk in the door with all these burdens and baggage that they carry from what happened at home, or what happened in the community, or what they saw last night across the street, they bring that with them everywhere that we go. And oftentimes, you find yourself in a situation where you have a child in front of you who's dealing with something that you don't necessarily know how to deal with yourself. And so we indirectly become caretakers of issues that we don't necessarily know how to resolve. And not only does that affect the students that we serve, but it affects us as individuals because we ourselves don't know what to do with how we process that information. And so I am a very strong advocate that the mandatory training that would be required across all agencies, including our own, would be not only beneficial to our students and to our communities and to our parents, but it would be beneficial to our staff as well because we would be able to get the resources that we need to support each other, just as much as we need to support our community. And I do think that that's something that may be forgotten a lot of times when we have this conversation. And so, secondly, the idea of having a task force, to me, I believe, is amazing because it provides an opportunity for a seat at the table that may not necessarily have been there historically, not only for Recreation and Parks, but again, for the communities that we represent in Recreation and Parks. You know, for me, as an advocate for those families that are in Southeast Baltimore that don't necessarily speak English, that won't come to a hearing such as this to testify, that won't show up to a government setting or a school setting because they don't feel comfortable being present in environments like these, they haven't had a voice at the table. So this allows the opportunity for those that, for those of us that are able to advocate for them to do so in a way in which they're actually being heard, in a way in which their issues are being represented. And so I really feel as though that aspect of the bill is super beneficial for that capacity as well. And not only for the Latino immigrant and refugee community in Baltimore City, but as we heard before, but just for the city in large, for our youth, for our young people that don't feel that they have a voice, that feel ostracized, that don't feel comfortable being able to express the true scope of what they experience on a day-to-day basis. To me, this is invaluable, providing the opportunity for those voices and for those that represent those voices to be able to come and say, "Hey, this is what we experience, this is what we see, this is how we feel we can advocate and better support these people." And so, number three, in regards to the policy changes and the policy requirements that would be more trauma-based, I do think that that not only, again, would be beneficial not only for Wreck and Parks, for all agencies across the board, but I do think it would allow us to best serve our communities well because we're doing things in their best interest, we're accounting for factors that maybe we didn't account for before, and we're allowing for best practices to help support those communities rather than harm them, whether intentionally or unintentionally. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I want to note, we've been joined by Councilmember Slyfer from the 5th District, and Councilman Cohen?
I just wanted to briefly say thank you for your service, Israel. It does not get, it often gets sort of overlooked that our rec directors, our park staff, our librarians, our teachers, every single day, they're going into work, they're engaging our kids, they're using asset-based thinking, they're creating programs, they're creating structures, and it is critical to our city that, as Israel said, we not only support our children, but we support them as well. That frontline practitioners, staff, know that this city supports them too. And so, again, thank you for all your work in Southeast Baltimore, and thank you for also participating in the creation of this bill. Having agency staff that are going to be tasked with Having agency staff that are going to be tasked with implementing it, being there on the front end and participating and contributing makes a huge amount of difference. So, I want to thank you, I want to thank Ms. Jay, and I also want to thank Jenny and Director Moore for their leadership in really embracing this approach. So, thanks again.
All right. We have Enoch Pratt Library.
I'm Hurt Malvoe from the Enoch Pratt Free Library. The library doesn't have a report, but we do support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, are there any further questions for agencies? Do have some questions that were submitted from Council President Scott, who couldn't be here this evening. He's, has a town hall, I believe, in Park Heights this evening, so he does send his regards and support. I'll send his questions after we move to our, finish our first panel. All right. So, up first, we're going to have a panel of parents and students. We, first up, we have Kayla Washington, a student with the Baltimore Child Abuse Center's Community Violence Program. Come on up to the mic.
My name is Kayla Washington.
Good evening.
I grew up in Emerson Village, and I'm here as a result to the traumatic loss of my brother last year from homicide. Before the loss, my mental health was very stable. I was an honor roll student in school. Really was in trouble outside of school. After traumatic loss of my brother, my attitude was off with everybody, and I started to make this bad decisions. My mom seen that I need help, and I'm very, and I'm seeking help through therapy and grief groups. And that helped me through my problems and my decisions till this day. So, in addition to the bill, I feel as though this committee should seek help immediately for young people, get guns off the street, and more patrolling on the streets because I don't want anyone else to be a victim to a traumatic loss and not able to get help.
Gregory Riddick, parent and founder of the TRIO Foundation.
Thank you, Chair, and, thank you, Chair, and all the council members. I just want to first say to the, speak to the fact that our children, they do, they are so traumatized, and they do need consistency from us as adults, you know? And I, from the TRIO Foundation, I do teach trauma around the city, different behavioral health programs, and through Roberta's House. And this summer, we had a Camp Aaron, and you know, when we first got there, we had like, we went to the gym, and in every corner, we had like, if a person had someone that was deceased, like the grandmother and grandfather, and the aunt and uncle, and the siblings. And this one little child was going from corner to corner, and I thought the child was lost, right? So, I stopped and I said, do you know which one of your, your family members was lost? He said, my sister, my brother, my mother, my father, and my grandmother. And he's about 10 years old, and then he said, but I do have a brand-new baby sister, though. And that speaks to the resilience of our children, you know? And they just need to be understood, and that's what this legislation is about because we all need to recognize what's going on with our children here in the city. And I am with the CPIC Committee that oversees the consent decree, and I'm on every subcommittee that we do have. So, I, I just want to let that be known, that there are some things that the Police Department is working on, but there are some things that really need to be instilled as well. But I want to get to what really affected my life. This, I want to speak on social toxins of Baltimore City. My oldest son Gregory Jr. was gunned down on December 10th, 2016, just across the street from two Baltimore city police officers who were on a traffic stop at 1:15 in the morning. This was after the Freddie Gray incident. Two gunmen emptied their automatic weapons at my son and into the direction of the two officers, who did not respond. After my son crawled into the street towards the policeman, my son flagged down a civilian who stopped his vehicle and jumped out to get the attention of the two officers, who still did not respond. The civilian had to call 911 after he had stopped three vehicles from running over my son to get the dispatcher to tell the officers to respond. And before they decided to respond, my son was ran over by a fourth vehicle and dragged 1,291 and one-half feet on the back of his head. That's how my son died. Why my son died is another story. We will never know if he would have survived a bullet that pierced his left lung, or the eight bullets that pierced him from his buttocks down to his feet without hitting any arteries. What we do know is that dereliction of duty on those officers we had played a major role in my son's death. My interaction and complaint with Internal Affairs was sustained by Major Dombrowski, was unsustained by Major Dombrowski, who since then was demoted for his role in the scandal of the Gun Trace Task Force. Although the Civilian Review Board found those officers responsible for neglect of duty, and although they admitted the truth of the facts of that night in their report, those officers were not even addressed because of the many changes of the guards of the BPD leadership. My family has been traumatized by the disinterest and inability of BPD to even follow up on my son's siblings' leads. And because of this, my son's cousin was shot 15 times in his face and body because he verbally confronted my son's killers. And this happened on my son's birthday following his death. Nothing still has been done. I have a nonprofit which is taught trauma-informed care. Now, I teach holistic center engagement, which is healing holistically in addition to trauma-informed care. It instills the truth that people are more than what has happened to them. We not only meet them where they are, but we engage them where they dream. We facilitate with Roberta's House and within behavioral health programs around the city. We are scheduled to also facilitate in our city's schools and prisons through reentry. We must come together and cover all the bases. Yes, we have an 18-agency permanent task force to fight crime. Let us also have 180-agency trauma-informed care task force to address our challenges to help ourselves to heal and move forward. Like my son, many youths have lost hope in having a future because of progressive politics. We need this legislature to pass so everyone in our city government will be able to recognize the true nature of what is going on in our city and its citizens, and can actively and effectively make a difference. One word comes to mind, resurrection. One day, we all long to see our loved ones again. We can resurrect hope and instill it in our youth once again. Together, we can resurrect trust between our community and our city agencies because we are all gathered here today. It proves that we believe that we can resurrect and transform this city, our city, Baltimore City, into a model city for the whole world to see and admire because we all got involved and resurrected this place into a city that heals. Thank you, and God bless Baltimore City.
Next, we have Erica Hamlet, parent and community activist.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come here tonight because I advocate for many different reasons and people, mostly the underserved and overlooked, from housing issues to female violence to underserved children of our community. There are so many different aspects of the broken system, and we aren't getting to the root cause. We can't keep making decisions for people without asking the people what they need. We are often in closed-door meetings without asking people, children, what they really are in need of, which means we aren't addressing the root cause of the problems. We're basically trying to figure it out, and if we're trying to figure it out, then we need correct answers to resolve the issues. My, one of my passions is children of addicted parents. We've been battling the war on drugs for many, many years. The opioid addiction is causing children to lose their parents and caregivers at an alarming rate. Children oftentimes don't know the effects of drugs. They oftentimes don't understand why their parents won't just leave drugs alone, don't they love me enough? There are so many unanswered questions because we often treat the individual, but we don't treat the entire family. Addiction treatment should be family treatment, not just individual treatment. When parents go off to rehab, there's often a 30-day to 60-day separation period. Where do the children go? Most of the time, these children are left to fend for themselves, go to other parents or caregivers that may be caught up in the cycle of addiction still. So, my organization, that I've been, I've seen almost numerous people in this room, just basically trying to get some attention for children of addicted parents, educating them. I do surveys to ask people, if we created this program, what would we need? Because if we're starting from the ground up, then we need to build it on the back of exactly what children need. Adults, we have to unlearn and relearn a lot of the things that we think we know because children come with so much baggage that they have to unpack. We assume that we know what they need, but we don't, we really don't. We bring our own experiences, our own life upbringing into situations, and we don't know what children are facing when they go home. Some children don't have food, some children fend for younger siblings, some squeegee kids are out there in the morning trying to make a couple dollars so they can have lunch when they go to school because we don't know what children are facing when they're home. So, I just believe that when we are attacking the war on drugs, that we cannot leave out one of the most important pieces, which are the children that are directly connected and affected to parents who are seeking treatment or still caught up in the active cycle of addiction. I have some surveys that I just want to pass out. You all can read them amongst yourselves. Just a little information to spark some ideas on ways to get the conversation going. Children aren't just going to walk up to you and say, hey, my mom or dad is battling with substance abuse. So, we have to find creative, effective ways to build trust so that children know that what stays in here, what goes on in here does not have to stay in here. That is a term that I hate. We need to empower children to use their voices and speak their own truth and meet them at the level of their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, last of this section, Ulysses Archer, parent, Parenting with Aces, founder of the Baltimore Gift Economy, and ACE Interface Master Trainer.
The journey of a thousand miles starts with one step, and that one step today that we're taking to examine the response of trauma. Now, what is the response of trauma? Each individual has a different response to trauma. I remember the 9/11. I'm sure many of you remember 9/11, and we all had a different response to 9/11. This is a very, this topic is very close to my heart because I was an assistant in a school, a private school, and I was attacked by my student. And I learned very shortly after that that I had PTSD, and I'm certified PTSD is no joke. Two and a half years of being balled up and wondering how am I going to get up and show my six kids how to be a man? It is not something that you take lightly. And so, I had to get up, and I became a farmer. I'm a farmer, I'm an urban farmer here in Baltimore City. And I came a farmer because when I put my hands in the soil, I felt something different. I felt a different type of energy, and it drew me to farming. And so, I got into farming, and then I started to look around and see other people that were going through traumatic experiences and responding to government agencies, responding to community people, responding to the police, responding to what's happening on the news, responding to all of these things, and I really wanted to know more. And so, a friend called me up and said, I'd like you to be a part of this ACE Interface Master Training thing, and I said, yes, I would do that. It was very difficult for me to do that because I'm a kind of a Lone Ranger, if you would. Farmers are kind of lone guys. I raise chickens, goats, and rabbits in Baltimore City, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be able to do that. So, I was invited, and I learned a lot about the vestiges of trauma, the epigenetics, and how it lives in our, in our cells, and we don't know why we respond to something. You say, I feel some kind of way about that, and you don't know why. Well, it may have been something that happened in the past that is a part of your genome, and your, and your genes are reacting to that in that moment. So, I wanted to say thank you for you guys really looking at this, this thing. I have two questions. One, I would like to see you guys attack this the same way that you attack the busing issue for the kids, and had all of the state agencies involved in this process. And I just heard that, you know, the Police Department is a state, is a state agency, but in that one card, you were able to include all of the state agencies that were transportation and all of those people that really need to be at this table. And the other thing is, we talk about trauma in the worst way of losing a caregiver, and that's one of the things on the ACE score thing. And I thought about that. And losing a parent is, I just lost my parent not too long ago, and I'm 50. And we have these kids losing their parents at alarming rates, and that is the most devastating thing to happen in a person's life. They are, I mean, it's off the scales how, how much that affects them. And so, losing a parent is also not just losing a parent to death, and it's also losing a parent to divorce. And that's one of the things that we haven't considered with the childhood obesity, and we're looking at childhood obesity as a marker, and we're saying, wow, why are these kids ingesting? Well, Johnny, if you're upset, why don't you come here and have a meal with me and sit down and have something to eat and, and really calm your nerves? And that's the way they've developed on how to deal with their trauma. So, it's not just at the, at the most extreme level and not minimizing that, but it also is in the everyday level. The median age for the ACE study was 57, 57. And so, this thing that you're doing, it only covers up to age 14. What about the high school student that was up here? It needs to also cover them. So, thank you very much, and I hope that my comments have been useful and helpful to you all, and look forward to seeing you at the farm.
I'd also note that that farm is in the 8th District. All are welcome.
Then, Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your work and for your testimony. Just a couple of quick notes. One, the bill actually covers children up to 18 and then youth up to 24. Did want to note that. Also wanted to note, you make a really profound point about state agencies. So, we heard from the Baltimore Police Department, some of the other folks that, as we go through this bill process, that I hope to engage with are, one, to your previous point, the MTA. with are, one, to your previous point, the MTA, because we know what they did when they reversed the bus pass hours, reduced the bus pass hours, caused an enormous amount of harm to our kids, and we were proud to participate with you in restoring those hours. Two, the Department of Juvenile Services, very important that they be part of this as well. Department of Social Services, and then the Sheriff's Department as well. I would all like to see participate in Memoranda of Understanding. So again, thank you for making that point that while this bill only legislates city agencies, because that's what we can do, we do want to see full participation from our state government as well. So thanks for that point.
So typically would be tradition to allow the Council President to ask questions first. Council President couldn't be here tonight, so I do have a few questions to the bill sponsor and agencies can jump in that were submitted on behalf of Council President Scott. The first is, this legislation only requires that recommendations be made to the agency director from the two agency employees. Legislation does not require an agency director to adopt the recommendations of their employees. How can we ensure that the agency practices and policies will change based on these recommendations? And how will agencies be held accountable for providing trauma-informed care?
I'm going to defer first. I'll answer as well to Mr. Cilio from the Health Department, who helped in writing this legislation.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council, and thanks to Councilman Cohen in particular, who I had the pleasure of working with on this bill. You know, I think the intention behind the two representatives, when we originally sort of developed the concept, was that those two representatives would be able to be the people that could help do some internal assessment of their own agency based on what they learned during our learning collaborative and during the training that they'll be receiving, pretty intensive training using the SAMSA Trauma-Informed Care Model by our team in the Office of Youth and Trauma Services. So we would be training those people in particular with the idea that they would then be stewards of the work to their departments. They would do an internal assessment and better understand sort of where the needs are within their department, and then would be able to provide that ongoing sort of assistance and be the people that we can funnel information to so that it remains in the forefront of their minds. What we tend to find is when we do our trauma-informed care training, which you heard from some agencies, I know DOT mentioned that we train them, and there are many others who have received training from us to the employees, is, you know, you go to the training, and I think somebody also said earlier in testimony, how do you then ensure the fact that it becomes part of the day-to-day work and remains on the forefront of people who are interacting with the public? So the idea is by having these two representatives, that these representatives can be people that we can continue to funnel information through, provide continuing education, they can continue in the training, the trainer model, to train their employees and give them additional information. So that's really the key, and I think ultimately, having the, and to answer the Council President's question more directly, I think ultimately by having a mayor's level task force overseeing this work, that that is going to help ensure the fact that when those recommendations do come up directly from the trauma champions, that it'll be ensured that through that task force, that ultimately those recommendations be implemented.
Yeah, and just to add really quickly, and thank you again to Mr. Cilio for his partnership in the Health Department, Dr. Giraza on this bill. The hope is that in each of these agencies, one person is frontline staff, and then one person is in the sort of higher managerial level, so that we both have the experience of someone who is working in the day-to-day, in a library, in a rec center, wherever, in housing, going out there to either service evictions or see uninhabitable houses where people are living. So it's one frontline staff and then someone who is higher in the organizational chart so that they can actually directly impact the policy and procedure from the agency. We believe that the combination of having someone who's in the day-to-day work and someone who can really, who has the authority to change policies at a high level with the assistance of the Health Department and the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, we will be able to get these policy recommendations implemented.
Thank you. And the second, can we set concrete goals for the Baltimore City Trauma-Informed Care Task Force? There should be specific metrics met by the task force in the first five years of its existence. For example, there could be a requirement that within the first year, the task force identifies all city programs and services that impact children and youth, as well as develop a citywide strategy towards an organizational culture shift, and these are, I believe, referenced in the legislation on page five.
Sure. And again, I thank the Council President for his thoughtful questions. Absolutely, we want to have hard goals, metrics. We want them to be concrete. We want to work with both community folks who are already in this work, as well as some of our researchers who have some technical expertise, and our Health Department, who has been implementing these trainings. We did not want to prescribe what those metrics would look like because we want that to be part of the work of the task force itself in determining what sorts of outcomes we're looking for. But I think it's a really important point that we can't just, what we do not want to happen is we pass this bill and then we say, okay, starting tomorrow, we're all trauma-informed, and it just becomes a useless buzzword. And I think that's what this question kind of gets at. So I think it's really important that this task force, having some ground-level expertise, being folks who are already in this work, who've had lived experience, who have research experience, are able to come together and develop those metrics and develop those goals and outcome measurements, because ultimately, I don't think it should come from us as legislators. I do not think we are the right people to determine what more effective trauma-responsive work looks like, but I think the task force is.
Thank you. Okay. So we have another panel of speakers we're going to get through, and then we will open it up to public testimony. I do want to remind folks, I do, I've seen some folks that have just joined us, that if you do want to testify, I believe there's a sign-in sheet at the front. Make sure that you both sign in and indicate that you do want to speak. All right. Yep, okay. And when you come up, this is being televised on Charm TV, Channel 25. Also want to plug, for those who want to show your friends later, we do need more civic engagement when it comes to watching these hearings, that these will also be posted on YouTube, usually within a week, on the Charm TV Citizens Portal. So make sure y'all share it on your social medias with your friends, watch it with the children at home so they see what's going on. All right. So first, we have Dr. Denise McLean Dawson, Associate Professor, Morgan State School of Social Work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to be here with you. It's Denise McLean, Denise McLean Davison, D-A-V-I-S-O-N.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, for having the courageous wherewithal to move forward with something different, to at least introduce something different. I'm originally from Chicago. Some of you all might have heard of that city. I've also lived in Atlanta, and Baltimore has been my home for the last six years. I say that because I think it's very important that the people who are represented as a part of the task force also be residents of Baltimore disproportionately, irregardless of if we're trying to get different levels of expertise in there. It's something about the people who have lived there that makes it different. The culture must be a part of the task force, whatever our intervention, prevention strategies are and our outcomes are, we must make sure that they are culturally appropriate and relevant, and the people have spoken. I'm not sure which community members were at the table at the drafting of this particular bill, but I hope that it was not a top-down decision. I hope it was an inclusive way of doing this work because that also is important. Yes, I have over 25 years of working in the community. I'm a community activist and just left the HIV/AIDS Conference, and you know how we've been working in that area for a long, long, long time. However, sitting here just listening to the parents and the children who have lived this, experienced this on a daily basis, touches my heart and it breaks my heart to make sure that whatever it is that we do in our agencies, in our respective agencies, it should not be about getting more money or keeping the doors open, but it should be about making sure that these folks don't get left behind, that this generational and intergenerational trauma at least is reduced. This is part of what the concerns have been, and I have been receiving calls all week about, would you please go and at least present to the council? Would you please make sure that our voices are? Would you please make sure that there, that you ask that there be no more meetings without the community there, without the community making sure that they have a chair, that we not be holding listening sessions, and folks having an opportunity to provide feedback, that there are some community organizations that are out here who have been out here doing the work for many, many moons. They far exceed my expertise in terms of that level. However, it's just very important that they be a part of that task force and that it not just look like another political piece again. We've seen that. I believe, Councilman Cohen, that you have, and the other members represented here, have the heart of these, of our community, that you have the heart of Baltimore as a part of what it is that we are moving forward, and I look forward to contributing anything that I can in that area. I certainly, if I had more time, I would talk about how trauma even impacts the birth rate and the mortality of children, but I would not want to leave out also the elders and how they are impacted by this level of trauma. And so we absolutely must have a holistic, culturally informed approach to dealing with trauma. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have David Ross, Violence Intervention Specialist for the Violence Prevention Program at R. Adams Colley Shock Trauma Center at the University of Maryland. Next up, we have Joe Whitlock, founder of the Freddie Gray Street Medicine Cooperative.
Greetings, Chairman Barnett and members of the Health Committee. My name is Amit Joe Whitlock. I'm a firefighter, EMT, and a social worker. In 2015, during the uprising, I founded the Freddie Gray Street Medicine Cooperative. We were at Montgomery Mall caring for injured youth when they were being shot by rubber bullets from the Baltimore City Police Department. This mutual aid project originally consisted of a rapid-response emergency medical team, a free clinic in Simmons Church, which is a block away from the intersection of Penn North, and a health education training program, which consisted of first aid, CPR, Narcan, et cetera. The cooperative is a person-centered, population-based, trauma-informed, community health and wellness mutual aid collaboration between a diverse group of emergency medical services and healthcare providers with the mission to address health disparities and ensure access to quality medical care for Baltimore's most vulnerable populations experiencing gun violence, addiction, homelessness, abuse, and other forms of trauma, operating under the principle that healthcare is a basic human right. The collective seeks to bridge gaps between at-risk individuals in the streets of Baltimore and medical professionals by deploying street medic teams, providing community health education programs, and encouraging African-American, Indigenous, Native American, Latinx, and LGBTQ girls and women to enter into public service careers as first responders in fire, rescue, emergency medical, and management health services. Over the last four years, the group has continued to grow in service and purpose in partnership with other population-based healthcare nonprofits here in Baltimore. I'm also a member of the Baltimore City Women's Commission Health Education and Equity Subcommittee and the Governor's Commission to Study Mental and Behavioral Health, and I'm on the Crisis Services Subcommittee. I respectfully request that you vote yes on the Baltimore City Trauma Responsive Care Act, following other national and state laws being passed across the country. Last year, members of the Congress passed HR 7320, Trauma-Informed Student Act of 2018, that amended the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 to provide criteria for use of federal funds to support trauma-informed, I'm sorry, lost my notes, to support trauma-informed practices in schools and other purposes. In the House of Representatives, December 17th, Ms. Clark of Massachusetts introduced a bill which was referred to the Committee on Education and the Workforce. This June, June 10th, 1770 Rise From Trauma Act during this Congress was also passed. It was a bipartisan piece of legislation, and just recently, in July, both the governors of Pennsylvania and Delaware approved various acts regarding trauma-informed care for their students, and it is mandatory that public students in Pennsylvania have trauma-informed care services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Rosenberg, Executive Director of the Baltimore Child Abuse Center.
Counselor, may I just indulge? Dr. Lane needs to go to a doctor's school night. Can we switch slots?
Sure.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Dr. Wendy Lane, Center for Child and Family Traumatic Stress.
Hi there. I'm Wendy Lane. I'm a pediatrician. I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Maryland Chapter of the AAP and the State Council on Child Abuse and Neglect. So I just want to say thank you to Councilman Cohen and the rest of the council for allowing me to speak tonight. I'll be, I'll be brief. Just a couple of key points. First of all, the bill talks about trauma, and we've heard a lot about violence and community violence, and I just wanted to be sure that the bill is addressing multiple forms of trauma. Research studies, including the Adverse Childhood Experience Study, take a very broad view of trauma, to include physical and sexual abuse, physical and emotional neglect, exposure to intimate partner violence, parental substance abuse, among others. And all of these forms of violence, not just community violence, are really common in Baltimore and also contribute to long-term negative effects on our children's physical and mental health and our children's well-being. So I do hope that all of these forms of trauma are going to be considered as part of this bill and maybe even consider defining trauma in the bill to include all these forms of trauma. My second point is that the bill does require a clinician and a researcher who are experts in trauma, and I greatly appreciate that. I would encourage you to consider having specifically a pediatrician on the task force. Pediatricians are often the first professionals that young children have contact with. They may also be the first professionals that see the sequelae of trauma, and that is often aggressive behavior, inattention, social withdrawal, and they're often the ones who are required to refer these children to community resources. So I think that that would be a strong addition to the panel. And finally, I appreciate that the Department of, that the Police Department was here and is on board with participating in the bill, but also like to make sure that the Department of Social Services and the public schools are also involved. So thank you for listening to my comments, and I applaud you on promoting this bill. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to come back to Mr. Adam Rosenberg, Executive Director of the Baltimore Child Abuse Center.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, members of the committee, for this opportunity to testify tonight in support of Council Bill 190410.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to come back to Mr. Adam Rosenberg, Executive Director of the Baltimore Child Abuse Center.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, members of the committee, for this opportunity to testify tonight in support of Council Bill 190410, and thank you, Councilman Cohen, for sponsoring the bill. I'm Adam Rosenberg, the Executive Director of Baltimore Child Abuse Center. By now, many of you are probably hopefully familiar with the work of BCAC. For 30 years, we've been Baltimore's nationally accredited children's advocacy center, working with law enforcement, child protective services, prosecutors, mental health professionals, medical providers in the community responding to and preventing the trauma of one of the significant ACEs, child sexual abuse. We provide a 24-hour response to child sex abuse that's grown, to human trafficking and exploitation. We manage multidisciplinary partnerships, and we train thousands of adults a year so that everyone we work with has the same kidup approach to recognize and respond to childhood trauma. And along the many hard lessons we've learned among these many years, and these are the lessons that many of you here already know, is that these children aren't just dealing with, with one victimization of sexual violence, but they're dealing with something called polyvictimization, that they have many things that have happened to them, and many were also traumatized by community violence. And so I think like many people who've testified and many of you who are working in this field have done is we've adapted our program to fit the reality of the community that we're in today. We recognize that witnessing and living with community violence is just as traumatic and has the same effects on brain chemistry as being the victim of a sex crime. And from a recent internal study that we did at the center, we found that the average ACE score of a child we saw was seven. It is a significantly high number, higher than the national average, higher than Maryland, and even higher than the average of the Baltimore City score. Since 2013, we really recognize that if one adverse event happens to a child, other traumas are likely to have happened to that child as well. And so allow me to reintroduce ourselves. For the last five years, Baltimore Child Abuse Center has been on a journey to expand our field of work and address the impact of a wide range of traumas inflicted upon and experienced by children living right here in Baltimore. After years of trial and error, we've learned a lot, and we've made mistakes, and we're constantly evolving and adapting, looking at national models and looking at what works here in Baltimore. We've responded to the need to be responsive to children who witness community violence, witnessed homicides, live with domestic violence, and children who enter foster care. Think of us now as an acute child trauma center. And what this bill aims to do is set a motion and a strategy and tactics that city agencies can also do to be trauma-responsive. It really mirrors many of the strategies we took at our own nonprofit, and I can tell you firsthand, these strategies work. We did our own internal strategic task force planning. We looked at data, we developed a strategy to respond, to train on these very same issues. And even without data, we can feel the impact, you know, among the 5,000 children we interact with every year in our waiting room, there's just a palpable edge that exists today that did not exist 10 years ago. Children are more hurt, they're more traumatized, and they're in need of a great span of services there. Here are some examples of what resulted, as a result of our own internal strategic plan, which I hope in some ways mirrors what the city can pull by, by creating such a task force with outcomes. We expanded our access for children and caregivers to get free mental health to respond to trauma in the aftermath of violence. And we brought on a team of therapists who have a combined 2,000 hours of training, and they use the right model, the right cognitive behavioral model for each child here. And so like you heard Kayla testify at the beginning of the hearing, she shared that therapy received by therapists at our center turned her around, and we need more of that in the city here. We certainly don't have the capacity nor the desire to do it for everybody. It takes certainly a village and a city to make this happen here. We've listened to her, and we've listened to the lesson shared by many others as well. We added specific child development strategies, child life strategies, to focus on what a child needs when they come in for treatment or intervention at a specific age-appropriate and really trauma-appropriate level there, so they're prepared for what lays ahead there in terms of therapy, treatment, intervention. We focused our outreach and efforts, and even our grants, seeking to respond to the identified needs when a child witnesses homicide. One specific example is a campaign we launched in May, You Can Be The Difference. And you can, you can see the video at YouCanBeTheDifference.org. It was an online campaign and video that impacts the, that demonstrates the impact of witnessing a homicide on a child. It depicts a kid in graphic form, graphic meaning cartoon form, not graphic form, but a child who witnesses homicide and the fallout that occurs in the days that follows, the self-harm, the withdrawing, the acting out, the fighting, the inability to focus. And it urges adults to recognize the signs and be the difference to get these kids helped. Here's proof that it works, is that we targeted the campaign through social media to specific neighborhoods and to specific populations who are really in tune with this work there, neighborhoods that have suffered high rates of trauma and violence, as well as the caregivers and the professionals who would work in that. And in just two months, we reached over half a million people with this video, and more than a quarter watched the entire video. I mean, just think for a second, when you scroll through Facebook or Instagram, how often you watch the entire video? A quarter of these people watched the entire video. And then when we targeted it for teachers, for first responders, and for the religious community, 72% watched the entire video. This is like cat video, you know, numbers here, where people watch the whole video. And as a result of that, they, they, they take action, they want to learn more. And I think that's what, what this bill does, and it's moments like that, that we're, we need to be able to provide that content for the community so that they, they can do more because they want to do more. So think about the, the teachers and the staff in Parks and Rec and the professionals working with children. This is that right time for the culture shift that's described in the bill on page five. And it's such a great phrase to use that there. There are so many children who are impacted by a homicide. Dr. Michael Sinclair, in the recent trauma hearing that Elijah Cummings ran in Baltimore, put out there that for every homicide that occurs in Baltimore, there are 10 children who are impacted by that there. The simple math alone shows us there's more than 3,000 children in Baltimore who've been impacted by a homicide, and we need to be able to figure out what we can do to be able to respond to those kids there through all of our different resources. We're happy to share our trauma response model gained by years of experience and frankly many missteps along the way, but that's what these journeys take. And being part of a truly trauma-responsive system takes a long time and many partners, and this is that first step. And so I'm grateful for your efforts today to bring this issue forward, to work as a collaborative team on this, and we're happy to be a part of the city's efforts to get there. We certainly urge a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Dr. Joan Kaufman, Center for Child and Family Traumatic Stress.
Thank you very much for your efforts on this really important, important topic. So I am Director of Research at the Center for Child and Family Traumatic Stress, a clinical psychologist, professor of psychiatry at Hopkins, and have really dedicated my career to understanding risk and resilience in children who've experienced abuse, neglect, other forms of adversities. I'm going to keep my topic, my conversation short, but I just want to highlight that there are three main things that we've learned over the years and that's been demonstrated by others as well that are key for promoting resilience and recovery, not just of the emotional and the behavioral effects of traumatic experiences, but of the changes in the brain and other physiological experiences associated with traumatic stress. So the three most important factors in helping to promote resilience and recovery following traumatic stress are, one, positive attachments and supportive relationships with caregivers; two, enrichment experiences; and three, trauma-informed, evidence-based services. So in terms of positive attachments and supportive relationships with caregivers, it means if we want parents to be able to help children, we need to support parents and make sure that they have the concrete and other specialized services that they need. And we do have lots of different types of interventions that help enhance parent-child relationships, which is a part of being responsive to, in a trauma system. In terms of enrichment opportunities, at the meeting that Congressman Cummings had, Dr. Sonia, and I'm going to say her name wrong, and I'm going to be embarrassing myself, Santalinas?
Santalisis.
Santalisis. She talked about all of their efforts to bring things like yoga, mindfulness, sports, and the arts into the schools. And we heard about people who are involved in doing the parks and recreation. These are things that are intricate and very important for resilience and recovery. And in terms of our evidence-based trauma-informed treatments, we've got to be thinking not just at child-focused treatments, but at treatments that are multi-generational, that can address the family issues around substance abuse, domestic violence, and parenting. And there are very innovative models that are, provide that sort of one-stop shopping because we best help our children when we help their parents and the adults in their lives. Beyond promoting resilience and recovery, and this is something that's been tapped on just a little, but I think would love to see be explicit in the bill, is that we absolutely have to reduce trauma exposure. The amount of trauma that children are exposed to is absolutely not acceptable. And there are concretes that, things that can be done and things that are starting to be done. And also at Congressman Cummings' hearing, Commissioner Harrison talked about the work he's trying to implement at the Police Department, the Ethical Policing is Courageous Initiative, which he did in New Orleans, and how as part of the initiative, we can help support that, make sure that there's youth and parents that are involved. But when that program got involved or was initiated in New Orleans, it not only led to, you know, fewer complaints about police officers, a drop of use of hard force, greater satisfaction, it also led to a 47-year low in homicide rates. So, I mean, there's other things, and you know, I'm a researcher, so I wrote stuff and I can hand this to you. But I think, again, the bill has to be not just resilience and recovery, but how do we really move the needle and decrease exposure to trauma and take our best practices to do that? So, thank you.
Dr. Tara Daugherty, Founder and Lead Consultant at Sage Wellness. Bobby Marvin Holmes, Morgan State-trained Clinical Social Worker.
Good evening, committee, good evening, council members. I first want to say I appreciate this bill. I think it's definitely needed. There's an old saying that, you know, you're a day late and a dollar short. When we look at the impact of trauma on Baltimore City, I will argue that we decades late and a billion dollars short. I'm a social worker here in Baltimore City, working with youth and families. Seen a lot working with youth and families, stuff that, you know, even, even myself, I need counseling for, particularly when I think about January of this year, when I lost one of my youth to violence in the city. I received a phone call, 2:00 in the morning, from his mom, saying that he was at Shock Trauma. I rushed over to the house to get his mother, as well as his older sister, and we rushed down to Shock Trauma Downtown. We got there to the room, security was called, already knew what that meant, and the next thing I know was screams that blast through the back room. Mom, as well as the older sister, came out, and I had to grab them both and hold them up, hold them up with both of my arms to keep them from hitting the ground. The impact of violence on families is something that we often do not pay enough attention to. The loss of a family member changes the dynamics of that family moving forward. Folks no longer sleep the same. Folks no longer eat the same. Trust looks different in your community. When we think about areas where violence is concentrated, and when we think about, and what we, what I haven't heard enough of this evening, mass incarceration, how it impacting, it's shaped so many families and communities within Baltimore City. Like I said, we are late with addressing this issue. I had to walk into a classroom today because the third grader was crying uncontrollably. And when I pulled out of the classroom, I say, "What's wrong?" She said, "I miss my daddy." And I said, "Okay, where, where's your dad? What's going on?" And she said, "He's in jail." And then she said she won't be able to see him because he's incarcerated for over 20 years. Now, we can all argue and debate about the father's decisions and actions. That's easy to do, and honestly, at this point, it's a waste of time. But when you have children in Baltimore City schools who cannot learn, who cannot focus because they worried about their parents, that's what trauma looks like in Baltimore City. Now, I only named two youth, I only named two youth so far, and I've been working with youth for over 10 years. Imagine when we multiply that, what's happening in Cherry Hill, what's happening in Sandtown, Winchester? So if we're serious about trauma response, we must prioritize communities that's been disproportionately impacted by trauma for years to come. We are late. I have to say that. We are very late with this because the trauma has happened for generations. That's what we're talking about, generations. The little girl will not see her father until she is an adult herself. This is generations we're talking about. A lot of work that needs to be done in addressing this issue of community violence and mass incarceration. And yes, we must say this, that it was shaped by systemic and structural racism within our city. We have to be honest about that. Trauma has been present in these communities before it was a buzzword. Trauma has been present in the lives of families within their homes, at their dinner, at their dinner tables, long before. So I definitely encourage the committee, I, 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 I love the idea, but at this point, we could work with the idea. I love the idea of trauma response, but we have to be thoughtful, we have to be mindful of the, of the communities and families that are in the most need at this time. We also have to be mindful moving forward with the task force work, we have to be mindful of who is represented on this task force? What practitioners of color, what Black and Brown organizations that do human services and social services work within our city, are they represented? Because they are on the ground every day, just like I am, working with youth and families. And we have to prioritize not just trauma response, but culturally competent and culturally relevant trauma response care and what that looks like in Baltimore City for our youth and families. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Cohen?
First off, thank you for your work. Thank you for your testimony as well. Just a couple of things I want to say. Bobby, one is that previous conversation with you and Shawna and some of the other practitioners, one of the amendments that I'm introducing speaks directly to what you just said, which is having Black and Brown-led organizations on the task force and inserting racial equity language directly into the bill. So I appreciate your contribution on that. And I would also echo your point that we are late, and that also, you know, quite frankly, we are complicit in some of the trauma that communities of color in this city experience. You know, I think about even this year's budgeting session where we, and I have enormous respect, and I've already voiced it, for Commissioner Harrison and the leadership that he is showing within his department, but I feel embarrassed that we are spending well over a billion, half a billion dollars on that department, on the Police Department, while spending less than, I believe, $12 million within our Health Department to address trauma. So if we can spend half a billion dollars on the department that is charged with responding to crime, but we're only spending about $12 million, tell me if I'm wrong in my numbers, DePaul or Greg, but, and a lot of that money frankly coming from the federal government through the recast grant, that to me is dramatically out of whack and disproportionate. And so I hope that part of what this bill pushes us as legislators to do is look at our own practices and policies and really examine our work through a trauma-responsive lens, and that it not just fall on our agencies who are going to be tasked with implementing, but that we, who are charged with setting and amending the budget, really take into heart what Bobby said, which is that if you have over half a billion dollars going toward the Police Department, but only $12 million going toward trauma-responsive care within the Health Department, then you are further perpetuating and setting the stage for mass incarceration, which is something that our city has already been through. And it is, I will say, and I talk to my colleague quite a bit, it is challenging in this moment right here because as we see heightened violence, many of our constituents aren't asking for trauma-responsive care. They're asking for mandatory minimums, they're asking for more police, they're asking for a return to the policies that frankly got us here. And so this is something that I wrestle with on a daily basis. on a daily basis within my own district, is having this conversation with folks who are feeling scared, anxious, et cetera, et cetera, about how do we not repeat our own mistakes again and again and again, and how do we truly move toward a space of healing instead of a space of incarceration because it hasn't worked? And if it had worked, we'd be the safest city in America, and we're not.
Thank you. We have Jessica Cook Thomas, Baltimore City Recreation Parks, Director of the Beachfield Rec Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee, for this opportunity. We've heard the need for this bill as it addresses the effects of violence, abuse, drugs, loss, poverty, and various traumatic experiences. I proudly say that Baltimore City Recreation and Parks in mission, vision, and practice has been the panacea for decades. The dedicated staff of BCRP are Baltimore's unsung first responders, providing triage to the city. We are proof that healing happens through relationship, and you don't have to have LCSW after your name, or DR before it, to be therapeutic. We strive to offer safe and inviting places, giving youth a choice and a voice. Sometimes, though, we are hit with situations that are above our pay grade, like the child that's supposed to be receiving clinical services and be on medication, but his father has been killed, and his mother works all the time, and is not making sure he or the agencies are compliant. He's coming to the rec center after getting word, with tears in his eyes, after getting word that his cousin has died at the emergency room doors from gunshot wounds. This bill would give BCRP staff access to clinicians. That access would also address the important question, who cares for the caretaker when the vicarious trauma may overwhelm us? Just as my coworker is involved in experiencing his daughter being the sole survivor of a tragic car accident. EAP means time away from the jobs that we love, so a conversation has the potential to prevent a referral. Lastly, as Councilwoman Cohen has mentioned, our agency has transferred staff without allowing enough transitional time or succession plan, causing angst and additional trauma to the staff and constituents of all ages who may have already been dealing with trauma and abandonment. An agency trauma-informed team will formulate policy to better address how this practice is done. So this bill is necessary to create long-term success for the city of Baltimore, a thriving BeMore that will BeMore because we will be more kind. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Mr. Chairman, members, and everyone who's been here this evening, first of all, I'm going to apologize. I have to leave and go to a couple things that I'm scheduled for. But I think this is a wonderful, wonderful opening of a way to address so many problems we often say we don't know what to do with. And going to the source of so many traumas is one of them. And being able, as a citywide organization that's being proposed, to coordinate, with our children especially, but our elders, well, with the population, in a way that helps people overcome the traumas, the traumas that lead to other troubles because they don't know what to do. I've had the opportunity to learn a little about this, and one of the things I would like to recommend, in a very positive way, of course, I support the legislation, but I would love to have an evening here, or a hearing, where, once we have come together and said, "This is a citywide way to proceed instead of slapping the face of, the slam of a jail door," to have the people who do this all the time, and who know about it and practice it, talk just about how. The how of what it is, and the how of how individuals and teachers and all can apply it. Now, that's not going to make us able to do it, but if we had a session where we are convinced this is a way, a pathway, citywide, okay, how do we do it? How do different people do it in different situations already? And I know there are different approaches, but there are some universal principles. And I think I would appreciate it if we could work them in to have a hearing where we acknowledge the problem, acknowledge a pathway, and then help each other, help us, figure out what that looks like, in a classroom, in a jail, in a household. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark. I would also note that we have had several meetings with the health department. We're going to be rolling out a series of hearings throughout the fall and spring of 2020 on a number of topics that are going to be informational. And so, absolutely, that is the intention of this committee, is to really uplift the public health crises that we experience here in Baltimore City. And I would like to commend Councilman Cohen for introducing this. I think this is an excellent start to that series of monthly hearings. So stay tuned for more, but I think this is a great jumping off point for us to have a very honest conversation about policy and the impacts of those policies on our communities. I also want to take an opportunity, as we move to public testimony, to thank everyone who's made time, who does the work on the ground, who's shared their expertise this evening and their experiences. If people are feeling uncomfortable, that is the point of this hearing, because the discomfort that we feel is minimal compared to the discomfort and impact that families experience every day in Baltimore due to violence and trauma. And so I think this is a great, a great space for us to have these conversations in a very honest way. And I'm looking forward to the work of this committee and partnering with all of the organizations represented here tonight, and folks who are doing amazing work on the ground every day, to push our city forward. I can tell you, and I tell my constituents all the time, we're not going to get this done alone. It's going to take a collaborative effort across the entire city of Baltimore to address this issue and all of the other ones that we continue to fight for every day to make Baltimore a better place. With that, I'm going to move to public testimony. If you want to speak and have not had an opportunity to sign in, again, the signing, there is another signing sheet there. And most of the folks have checked to testify. If you did that by mistake, just let me know, but I'm going to run through the list. We have, and I apologize, some of your handwriting is worse than mine, so I'm going to do the best I can. I have Tamira Fraser here. Tahera? Awesome. Thank you. Come up, give us your name, and speak clearly in the mic because it is being televised.
All right. So my name is Tahera Fraser. I'm here representing Clea, and I'm a 12th grader at Green Street Academy. So today, we are talking about trauma in youth, and I've seen a whole bunch of adults talking about it with a bunch of numbers, so I figured who's best to ask than the youth. So I'm here to give you a real-life story. A friend of mine has experienced trauma since she was a child by being sexually molested by someone in her family. And instead of speaking to family whom would not believe her, she had no one to talk to, which once she got into high school affected her grades and affected her behavior. The youth is your future. If you don't support the youth, then you have no one. Baltimore City is in our hands, literally. And if we are traumatized by everything we see on the streets, by walking to the bus stop and seeing things that we can't speak to anyone about, or by not being able to get help from anyone, or by having friends who, not only if I haven't experienced trauma, but if they have, if they can't help me, then I can't help them. If no one can help them, then they can't help us. Baltimore City is in our hands. We are the future of the youth, and the youth cannot help Baltimore City if we are traumatized, if we are silenced, if we have no voice, if we have no one to speak to. We have a bunch of thoughts, and we have ideas, and we have things that we want to say, but no one to say them to. And it's hard when you want to speak to someone, but you have no one to speak to, or if they want to talk to you, or they listen, but they don't have the proper training to help you, or they don't have the proper medications to give you, or anything to help you heal. That's all we need is healing. And trauma in Baltimore City has been happening for generations upon generations. So if my mother is traumatized, how can she help me fix my trauma? Or if I'm traumatized, how can I help my little brother fix his trauma that he sees? He's a Black man. He's going to be traumatized. He's already set up to be traumatized. He cannot help us. I cannot help us if I am traumatized. The future is in our hands, and if we are traumatized, we cannot move forward and help Baltimore City become better without this bill being passed. That's all. Thank you.
Melissa Rock?
Thank you.
I have a three-year-old with me who might be joining us. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Melissa Rock. I lead the Birth to Three Strategic Initiative at Advocates for Children and Youth. Although Advocates for Children and Youth is a statewide organization, my project is specifically focused on children and families with young children here in Baltimore City. Advocates for Children and Youth is an organization that identifies and proposes policy solutions to issues negatively impacting the lives of Maryland's children and youth. I also reside in District 14. We are really excited about this bill. This bill really touches all of our work across all of our issues. As the Birth to Three Strategic Initiative Director, I'm going to dig into young children for a moment. I'm going to build on Dr. Kaufman's testimony and get into the importance of attachment. We now know that 85% of brain development happens by the time a child turns three. One of the greatest protections for young children and babies is a strong attachment to one of their caregivers. So it's really essential that until we are able to really limit the trauma that families and children in Baltimore City are experiencing, that we expand the supports that help build a strong and healthy attachment between young children and their caregivers. We absolutely need a two-generation approach here, really multi-generation, beyond-two-generation approach. And I think that this bill is a great way to make sure that all the programs that touch young children and their families, and, you know, all children and youth across the city are more trauma-informed. For young kids that do experience trauma, it also impacts their, of course, their social-emotional well-being, which then impacts their school readiness. As their brain's developing and they're experiencing trauma, the brain doesn't develop the way it should, and then they aren't able to control their impulses the way other children can. So it touches our education work, our child welfare and juvenile justice work. All those young people have experienced trauma, and it is critical that the services that they're receiving are trauma-informed. So you have our written testimony. I'm not going to belabor the point. I know a lot of people are here to testimony, are here to testify. Thank you so much for this bill, and we do hope that it passes.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Melissa, for your testimony and for the work of Advocates for Children and Youth. Did want to just shout out, I know she had to leave, but Shamoya Gardner has been working with us very closely on this bill. It's been a really strong partnership with Advocates for Children and Youth. She's been just an incredible thought partner, and, you know, just since she was, had to leave, I just wanted to put that out publicly, that she's been also helping to shape this bill as well. So, thank you.
Next, we have Kelly Berger.
Hi, and good evening. I had some written comments as well, and in the spirit of brevity, it's the one with the blue letterhead from Board of Childcare. Thank you so much. So, Council Chair, Councilwoman Cohen, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here this evening, and for me to express my strong support related to this bill. My name is Kelly Berger, and I am a licensed social worker, certified treatment, certified trauma treatment professional. I'm a proud Baltimore City resident. I reside in District 11, and have been in the city for 13 years. But I'm here tonight representing Board of Childcare. My agency has been involved in a large-scale implementation of trauma-responsive practices for the past six or seven years. And so I'm really here to help share some lessons that we've learned along the way, and hoping that they help support the work being done here across the city. First, it is critically important that we not generalize the concept of being trauma-responsive in the approach taken to training. Many of my comments are going to echo a lot of what was said tonight, but I really want to emphasize that the approach to formal training should reflect a layered and comprehensive curriculum that builds a foundational awareness of the science behind childhood trauma, and also provides steps for how agencies and systems can create a trauma-responsive and resilient system. It was refreshing to hear the discussion and the transparency about the deficiencies in the budget that, as we're moving into this process, because this kind of transformational culture change requires a significant commitment of resources, more than just financial resources. But the personnel involved in this process cannot be expected to do this on the side or as another duty as assigned. Organizations that are being asked to participate in this initiative will be devoting critical human resources to the process. And as a representative of a nonprofit organization, I know that these organizations will be thrilled to participate, but in their participation, they will be committing significant amount of their organizational capital, and that should be recognized and commended by the city and by the state. I also want to echo, Mr. Nunez spoke to it, and a couple of people have spoke about the impact of secondary traumatic stress on the workforce that is serving our youth, our children, our families here in the city of Baltimore, and working with people. The prevalence of secondary traumatic stress and burnout among people that work with traumatized youth is significant. We cannot expect the people that do this incredibly hard work to pour from empty cups and not have it significantly impact the quality of care provided to our traumatized youth and families. So as we're approaching the development and the implementation of this legislation, the need for true systems-level approach that puts everybody at the table. I'm preaching to the choir. I'm saying everything that people have said. It was awesome to hear Baltimore City Police here earlier today and their commitment. But at my agency, if we had only had 70% of our programs at the table, we wouldn't have been successful. It is critical that every system touching the lives of youth and families in Baltimore is engaged in the transformational process. Some folks spoke about the need of having primary care and pediatrics at the table, our faith-based community, business foundations that were very present at Representative Cummings' hearing last week, a couple weeks ago. I was on vacation. I missed it, unfortunately. But a true systems-level approach will help us move from being a reactive intervention-only strategy to actually being proactive in preventing the incidence of childhood trauma, decreasing the negative social determinants of health, and building resiliency across our city. So as you noted, Councilwoman Cohen, in your opening, it would be naive of us not to recognize the community context as it relates to cultural shift. We have to recognize the historical and generational trauma experienced here in Baltimore. And when we talk about trauma and toxic stress, we are talking about experiences such as homelessness, abuse and neglect, untreated mental illness... as homelessness, abuse and neglect, untreated mental illness, domestic violence, experiences of systematic oppression and targeted violence. And it's really important that we are inclusive of all of those aspects of trauma as we move this process forward. So as I wrap up in my closing, the key lesson that I really want to leave everyone with is that no organization or system will ever be done implementing trauma-responsive practices. The understanding of trauma and resilience is not something that can occur in the context of a training or a four-week program that we just put in place. The development of trauma-responsive culture, one that promotes empathy, equity, builds resilience, is a journey. It requires an ongoing dialogue, a continuous process of reflection, assessment, quality improvement, training, retraining, and really close monitoring of that culture change across the system. And when we take the time and are intentional in creating a system in a way that truly understands the principle of the journey we will be on, that gives us the foundation to already be headed towards a trauma-responsive approach. So I thank you for introducing this legislation, for bringing forward these uncomfortable conversations, and for giving us all the venue to share our thoughts with you tonight.
Ryan Turner. Come on, Ryan. You're good, okay. I was messing with you. All right. Stacy Jefferson.
Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Stacy Jefferson, and I'm here on behalf of Behavioral Health System Baltimore in support of the Baltimore City Trauma Responsive Care Act. Just to note, Behavioral Health System Baltimore is a nonprofit organization that oversees the system of care for persons with mental health and substance use disorder. We oversee the public behavioral health system. And so this bill is a positive first step to mitigating the negative impacts of ACEs and childhood trauma and building community resilience. And I want to thank Councilwoman Cohen and others for their efforts in championing this legislation. You've heard all the statistics. Children and youth in our communities in Baltimore have been disproportionately affected by not just adverse childhood experiences and childhood trauma at the family level, but also at the community and society level, as outlined in the Philadelphia Urban ACE Study, like witnessing violence, not feeling safe in your own neighborhood, and let's not forget also experiencing racism and discrimination. We're in a crisis, and the steps that we take now will determine our future. And to address this, the city needs to make sure we have a coordinated effort with all our partners, but particularly with the communities themselves, in order to change the tide. We also should include, like other people had mentioned, some of our other system partners, like Baltimore City DSS, the hospital community, the State's Attorney's Office, BPD, and Baltimore City Schools. We look forward to working with all of the partners in the efforts outlined in the bill while continuing to keep in the forefront the integral role that communities play in supporting a child's healthy development and also buffering the impact of childhood trauma. And as a city, in order to truly have meaningful impact, we must rethink our policies. So we, and particularly our legislative policies. So we did work with the Health Department as well as the administration to propose an amendment. I'm not sure if you guys actually have that amendment currently, but you should receive it soon. Basically, what the amendment would do is to add to the duties for the task force, asking that they also submit legislative policy recommendations that integrate knowledge of childhood trauma and tools to promote resilience by addressing certain issue areas. And we outlined them as economic health and workforce, safe and stable housing, access to healthcare, early childhood, and also equity. These are things that people don't always think about when thinking about how do we address trauma and adverse childhood experiences, but want to make sure that these are policy areas that we're looking at as well. It's also our hope that the task force will consider work that many of people in our communities are already doing, examples of things such as self, community conversations, and also reviewing models across the country, such as the Missouri model, Virginia, and things that have been done in Delaware and Pennsylvania. We look forward to continuing our work with the administration, the city council, and all of our partners on these efforts. And one thing I want to leave everyone with is that community resilience can be achieved. But to do so, we can no longer operate as business as usual, and so we ask for a favorable report on the bill.
Thank you. Thank you. Raekwon Harris. Dennis Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Councilman. Thanks for having me. My name is Dennis Rodriguez Cole. I'm a self-peer facilitator at the Yes! Dropping Center. Self within itself is a community conversation, but it also entails more or less group therapy. But instead of having honestly an actual therapist, it's more peer-to-peer, in which we all tell our backstory, we help each other out throughout traumatic experiences, we help grow throughout the safety of, for example, a kid that he knows that he's homeless, but he knows that at nighttime he might not feel safe to go to sleep. So in turn, you might have a kid as self that's like, "Well, I have insomnia, so I'll just stay with you for tonight." And now that, now he has that safety of, "I can go to sleep at night," because I know there's someone that doesn't sleep at night that's just going to be next to me. It goes into emotion, in which we always talk about anything that affects your emotions. It doesn't matter what it is in life. It's always going to affect you emotionally in some way, shape, or form, whether it's positive or negative. Growing up, a lot of us aren't honestly taught how to deal with negative emotions. We're taught either to bottle it up, put it to the side, or just not really deal with it. And it honestly comes out as adults in very negative, toxic ways. And so in turn, a lot of self is, the L in self is actually lost in letting go, and a lot of it is actually letting go of like those past emotions, like that attachment to something that might have happened to you. And because we were never taught at a young age of how to actually deal with it, we held onto it all the way into adulthood. And a lot of us, because we're parents, we want to do better for our kids. And so in turn, we come to the program, especially the therapy, just honestly to be better. And actually goes into the last part of self, which is future. And all of us are always trying to find a future in everything that we do. I know personally, for me, it's helped me with my daughter. Before I had her, personally, I was just in like, I don't want to say I was on the wrong path, but I was starting to go on the wrong path. I would have probably eventually ended up with me either dead or in jail. And my daughter definitely was an eye-opener for me, but it wasn't the eye-opener that like I truly, truly needed. And I want to say on my third self, we actually had a dad who was going through a custody issue. And while he was explaining things that, about his past that were like coming up and flaring up, I was beginning to realize that I had gone through some of the same things in my past, and I had never resolved them. And I didn't know if they might come out in the same way. And so it helped me to not only like self-reflect, but also help out one of my friends, in which we found a solution that was honestly a lot better than a solution that either one of us could have thought of by ourselves. A lot of what I've heard is a lot of just whatever something happens to someone, this is how we should probably react to it. But honestly, those things should have never happened to begin with. That's honestly how it is. But we really can't stop those kind of things from happening, so. Thanks for having me. Got nervous because, you know, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Quinlan.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair, and Councilman Cohen for introducing this. And thanks to everyone else who spoke today. There's not a whole lot I can add to that, but I just want to share a little bit of our perspective from Family League. Again, my name is Matt Quinlan. I'm with Family League of Baltimore City. We're the local management board for the city. So that means that we work collaboratively with a lot of the city agencies that have already testified tonight, a lot of the nonprofits and other advocates in the room. And accord to our work is providing funding, training, professional development, capacity building for local community-based nonprofits. And that includes home visitors that are working with expecting moms and new babies. That includes community school coordinators at the kindergarten all the way to, you know, high school levels, after-school providers, you know, urban farmers doing food resiliency work. I mean, just the spectrum of community-based partners across the city. And one thing that we hear over and over and over again is the need for trauma-informed care and trainings and services. We recently did a needs assessment of all of our funded partners, and the top responses for needs for professional development and training and capacity building were trauma-responsive care, restorative practices, and trainings in support around vicarious trauma, which we heard social workers and other providers tonight talking about the vicarious trauma that's experienced. For those of us, you know, folks working in rec centers who are dealing with youth experiencing trauma. And so we're hearing this over and over again from our providers in the community, and so we're trying to work that into our trainings and support. But we think, as others have said, the time couldn't be more right, if not, you know, too late, but not, not too late, but not, you know, never soon enough. And so just really grateful that the council is taking this on, and we just want to be here tonight to offer our support in any ways that we can collaborate with agencies and others with trainings and, you know, implementing this work across the city. So thank you again for your work, and we strongly urge a favorable report.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Rebecca Vivret.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Rebecca Vivret, and I am testifying today in support of this bill on behalf of the Family Informed Trauma Treatment Center. The FIT Center is a Category Two center within the National Child Traumatic Stress Network, and we have been funded by CAMPSA continuously since 2007. And our primary goal is to develop, implement, and evaluate family and community-focused trainings and interventions for children and families who have experienced trauma. We applaud the councilmen and the co-sponsors of this legislation, and we'd also like to offer some additional thoughts for your consideration that perhaps might improve the bill even further. Specifically, as some others have mentioned, with regard to the task force, there are several critical partners that we feel should be named as specifically as possible for inclusion in the task force, and I'll highlight a few, and I'll give you my written testimony. We list more, but we want to highlight the most important ones from our perspective. The first is caregivers with their own trauma histories who are parenting a child with ACEs or trauma exposure. So it's very important, I think, for the task force to have someone who is taking that two-generation approach and including caregivers with actual lived experience in intergenerational trauma and offering that perspective, not just from an academic perspective. Second, an active mental health professional with specific expertise in early childhood trauma, which is actually my area of expertise. And the reason for this is so that the task force can really look through the lens of not just responsiveness, but prevention and early intervention, because we know how beneficial that approach is, not just from a cost standpoint, but from a long-term outcomes standpoint. And then lastly, to echo Dr. Lane and others that mentioned a pediatrician or family practitioner. At the University of Maryland, we have a Healthy Steps program where we have an integrated care model with a person who is trained in trauma-focused practices, developmental science, and mental health practices embedded there in the family medicine clinic. And for most of our children, particularly in that zero-to-three range, that is really the port of entry. Many of those children are not in formal childcare or early head start, but the place they are going is to the pediatrician. And so we have lots of opportunities to engage with families there, and so we'd ask for a physician to be on that task force to offer that perspective. And then you can look through the written testimony and other areas that others have mentioned that we agree should also be represented. So my last point is with regard to the training component. So you've heard some folks mention that tonight. There is a real danger in potentially simplifying what it actually takes to become a trauma-responsive system. So if individuals and systems are only receiving that basic awareness training or basic how-to skills trainings without that deeper dive into authentic cross-agency and community partnership, systems-level change, and using a more formal collaborative process model for quality improvement and for measuring success, it will be very difficult to achieve a meaningful culture shift that is the goal of this bill. So I would strongly suggest incorporating those elements into the trainings and into the bill language, and to facilitate at minimum quarterly interactions with those trainings for between-session learning and to have more opportunities for experiential learning. So annual one-off trainings are not enough to really move the needle. And so we support this bill, and thank you very much for introducing it.
Thank you. Philip Leaf.
Chairman Burnett, Councilman. First of all, I want to really thank you for having, not just the bill, but having these discussions and the discussions that, not just taking place today, but I know have been taking place for weeks and weeks. I think it's important, though, to highlight a couple of things that were pointed out today, which, one is, we have a lot of trauma in the city. It's not going to be solved by having service providers or even, or even whether it's the rec centers or other things, that all of us in the city have to become involved and more possibly involved. And I use a personal example of, I used to have a totally different job, and then three of the young people we were working with got shot. And I decided, instead of trying to figure out how to be helping families after they got shot, I need to be spending some time to work on trying to help people not get shot. But I think this is an issue of employers and employer strategies, and so one of the things is thinking about yourselves. Each councilperson, you know, you have staff, and you're sort of employing those staff. And although you always get nice, positive feedback, I think a lot of the time those staff are dealing with is they're dealing with trauma in the community in the same way that many of you are dealing with trauma in the community. So I think as you're looking at these tasks that other people are going to be doing, thinking about how you could be most effective, and how many of you are already effective. I'm not saying you're starting there. But being able to use yourself as positive examples about how you and your other council people have changed what you've been doing as you're interacting with your constituencies because you've become more trauma-formed, more trauma-responsive, and hopefully that can be communicated to other employers, other people working in the cities, that there's important things that we can all be doing, whether it's just recognizing the people that we're working with are experiencing these traumas, making sure that people can get off from work to go to schools, to meet with their teachers or other things. There's lots of little things that really make it very difficult for people that are dealing with these issues. And that second issue is, that's come up, is the inequities that exist, both racial and other inequities, that people are at much higher risk, and that part of our implementation really needs to be focusing on creating equity, because unless we have this greater equity, and again, that is not just through the legislation, but it's a positive example about what the city as an employer is doing with its own staff in terms of the kind of things it's doing, the kind of people it is employing. And it's made an effort to employ ex-offenders and other kind of things. I think being able to communicate this, this reduces, this creates opportunities for people, reduces trauma. And so I think although there's a lot of really good things in the bill, and it's important for the bill to be passed, I think the bill is really only one part of the work that both this group and the mayor is trying to do, and I think we need to be sort of making sure that there's understanding of all those things, because again, we need a more positive climate in Baltimore, because the bottom line is, a lot of our young people don't have any hope. They don't feel, you know, for many different reasons, and not just a single reason, but, you know, many of them, if you talk to them, "I'm not going to live past '24 or '25," or "I'm never going to really get a job," even though we have many youth coming out of the same neighborhoods that are excelling wonderfully. That it really is making sure that more people really have positive expectations and that all of us in the city and all of those who come and work in the city really are supporting the positive expectations, creating these kind of things. And clearly, the rec centers, the service providers play a big role in there, but that's only one part of the day and the lives of people. And I think we need to, you know, again, it's many things and many other bills that you guys are doing and many things that many people that are watching this are doing, because many of the people who are working on these things will be watching this. And I think, you know, recognizing those, that work that those people do, the other things that are doing are really the foundation which we, more of our young people and our families will be successful despite the fact that we're going to have over 300 murders this year, and we've had over 300 murders for many years and many more shootings. But we're also making sure that more and more children and more and more families are being successful. So I think, again, we really want to thank you for the bill, for the work that's being done, but also asking you not to forget about the many other things that you are doing, which are-- which are also important in reducing violence, in reducing, you know, in promoting positive outcomes for young people. And more importantly, as many of the young, recently-elected people on the council have, you yourselves are really positive examples for people slightly younger than you saying that, you know, people can actually get on the city council, can make positive changes. And I think we have people also who are getting jobs, other kind of things, being able to make sure that people in our city have hope, particularly the young people have hope, and the legislation will be part of that. But I think many more things that you also are doing, that I want to thank you for what you're doing, also what the mayor's office is doing, and employers are doing and other things are doing, because unless we are able to come together, not just people who are affected directly by this legislation, but also are doing similar things, not because they're legislated to do it, but because it's the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We have Lydia Watts.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Watts. I'm the executive director of a new center at the University of Maryland Baltimore called the Rebuild, Overcome, and Rise, or ROAR Center. I do have copies of my written testimony, so I'm not going to read it verbatim, but the ROAR Center is recently launched in, I was, started in January. We've been recently staffed, or fully staffed since June 1st, and we assist victims of crime in Baltimore City. To date, we've helped about 70 people who live in Baltimore City who are survivors of crime, ranging from survivors of homicide to non-fatal shootings, rapes, assaults, intimate partner violence, and much more. By definition, all of those people have experienced at least that one trauma that has driven them to our doors, but the vast majority of them, as you've heard from people who have testified previously, have experienced multiple, multiple traumas, often since they were very, very young. I've been doing this work, working with survivors of crime, my entire legal career, spanning 23 years, and I've been working with survivors of intimate partner and sexual violence for 30 years, most of that time in DC. I recently moved to Baltimore City about a year and a half ago. So, it's that perspective that I bring to my testimony. I am not a mental health professional, I am an attorney, but have worked literally my entire career 100% with trauma survivors. One of the things that I've heard other people testify to is, the best way to support young people who have experienced trauma is to support the adults in their lives. And we've also heard about intergenerational trauma. So, I certainly, though I'm very much in support of this legislation, I do encourage the council, as well as the mayor's office, to think about how to expand this to adult-serving agencies. The reason I say that is that the vast importance of operating with a trauma-informed lens is because agencies that are tasked with meeting people where they are and addressing the needs that folks are coming to them for, if they are not operating through a trauma-informed lens, they quite simply will fail in their missions. The reason for that is that without the knowledge of trauma, ability to recognize the signs of trauma, compassion for trauma histories, and skills around how to address trauma, they will view the folks that are coming to them incorrectly. For example, they will see somebody who may be perceived as uncooperative or even belligerent, forgetful, having a flat affect, having differing versions of events, and they will construe that as this person's lying, this person's trying to game the system, this is not a credible person. Young people will be perceived that way, and certainly adults as well. But actually, those are real signs of trauma that are being exhibited in that flat affect, in that gaps in memories or changing, changes of memory. And so, that if that person is treated as if they are, in fact, you know, trying to game the system or otherwise, you know, just problematic, and we, I see this every single day from the police, from DSS workers, from, you know, people at City Hall or, you know, get to collect the water bill, who are dealing with people who are highly traumatized, and these people are not treated as if they're human. They're treated as if they're a problem, as if somebody just to move beyond. And that when we can work with the compassion for trauma, what a big difference that can make for people. And I will illustrate this with a fictional client example, kind of pulled from my 30 years of doing this work. I'll call her Lila. She had come to me as a survivor of intimate partner violence, but she had endured multiple traumas stemming back to her childhood. She had been physically abused by her grandfather, with whom she stayed regularly since her mother was a single mom who relied on her father to provide childcare. At the age of 13, Lila was placed in five different foster homes while the investigation against her grandfather was pending, and her mother was taking the steps required by DHS to reunite with Lila. By the time I met her, she was 24-years-old, had three children of her own, all of whom she was raising without the help of the children's fathers. She was being physically, emotionally, and sexually abused by her current boyfriend, who was helping her out by watching the kids while she was at work at Walgreens. When I first met her, she did not disclose that she had been suspended at work for coming to work drunk. She did not disclose to me her history of alcohol abuse that led to two prior convictions for DWI. She did not disclose to me that she'd been hospitalized after the birth of her third child for suicidality. None of these facts seemed relevant to her and what she was coming to me for, seeking a protection order against her current boyfriend. How that was manifesting was that she was missing appointments with me. She twice missed appointments. I was unable to prepare for her case. She rarely picked up the phone when I called, and when I did, she was very terse and angry with me. I could have dismissed her as being, you know, uncooperative, just too angry for me to deal with. I could have easily just withdrawn from her case. I could have made lots of assumptions about her truthfulness, her fitness as a parent, whether she, again, she was taking advantage of the system or my services. But with a trauma-informed lens, I could see that she didn't trust me or want to be reliant on me at all, that she hated feeling vulnerable and did not want to tell me the intimate details of her life. And once I was able to shift the discussion to one of compassion and understanding, rather than judgment and assumption, we built a strong working relationship. Not only did we get that protection order, but she committed to sobriety. She maintained that sobriety for the past three years. She became active in her kids' schools. She had changed her GED and was able to secure much more stable employment. Not all stories will end this well, but it will end very poorly if we continue to do business as usual, as you've heard from many, many prior testifiers. And again, traumatized children grow up to be traumatized adults. And that when the parent's trauma is not addressed, it'll be very confusing to children if we're telling them about trauma-informed care, but they're seeing their parents and their caregivers being treated with the same indifference that frankly, most people are treated by government agencies. The one additional thing that I would like to talk about is a new, building on trauma-informed care is some research that's been doing, being done by an organization in Massachusetts called the Full Frame Initiative. Again, this isn't my area of expertise, but I have found the five domains of well-being of being a very interesting way to build on trauma-informed care. Very briefly, and again, it's attached to my testimony, but the five domains of well-being is premised on the idea that all of us as humans need certain things. One, social connectedness to people and communities in ways that allow us to give as well as to receive. We all need stability that comes from having things that we can count on to be the same from day to day, and knowing that a small bump won't send off a domino effect of crises. We all need safety, the ability to be ourselves without significant harm. We all need mastery, a feeling that we can influence what happens to us and have the skills to navigate and negotiate life. And we all need meaningful access to relevant resources to meet our basic needs without shame, danger, or great difficulty. The reason I raise that in this context is that though I fully applaud trauma-informed care and think it's an absolutely critical tool, it comes, it comes from a place of what happened to you and what's wrong with you. The Full Frame Initiative, the five domains of well-being, switches that to what matters to you and what do you need to support yourself. And so, I just encourage that what this task force, as it comes together, to push the question not just what happened to you and what is keeping you back, but what matters to you and to keep these five domains of well-being in mind. And thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. Again, I do have copies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't think I could say much more than what's already been said here this evening, but a couple of things I do want to highlight is what we've been seeing from the ground level, doing work with, doing work in communities throughout Baltimore City, is we seen so much high levels of trauma that our young people specifically are experiencing. When we talk about the levels of trauma that they're experiencing, what is causing these young people to normalize abnormal behavior? So, the things that we know are abnormal, they've normalized because the levels of traumas that they have experienced throughout their lives that haven't been addressed. And then, what-
Apologies for cutting you off. Do you want to say quickly who you are and who you're with?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just because I think the, it's on the shirt, but the context is important.
Sorry. James Timpson, Director of Community Partnerships and Safety for Roca Baltimore.
Thank you.
So, what we realize is that the levels of trauma that young people are facing are causing a lot of behaviors that we're actually seeing them act out. What we're learning more and more is that the brain development or the brain science behind this is really important, and it's something that, as we dove more and more to the work, we started to understand the importance of the brain science behind it, because a lot of our young people don't have the ability to emotionally regulate, because they're stuck in that fight-flight-or-freeze phase, meaning that they're stuck in a survival mode. So, it's by any means necessary, we do what we got to do to survive out here. And that's directly related to the trauma that they've experienced in their lives. We deal with young men every day who have been traumatized in so many different ways that they don't understand that what they're experiencing is actual trauma. They think it's just a way of life. So, when we go onto communities, we have to be very aware of that fact and very careful not to tell people what it is they're experiencing. We have to allow ourselves to be able to be a part of the experience and then deal with it in a way which we know will help change their lives. You can't tell a person who doesn't believe that they've been traumatized that they're traumatized, because they're not going to receive it. You have to allow them to realize the condition that they're in and understand that the things that they've been experiencing are abnormal, which has caused them to be traumatized. Again, then that's part of what we're learning through the brain science also. Quick story. Young man acts out, and most places, we're quick to call the police and, you know, get them locked up for behavior or whatever the case is. But we're very clear that young people respond or react the way that they react because of something that has happened, or it couldn't be something that happened today, it could be something that happened five years ago. But we had a young man who came in, got into a disagreement with staff. He pulled the knife on staff, spit in another staff member's face, and we followed this young man and made sure he got home that evening. And having a conversation with him the very next day, because we had to, we went out and found him the next day to have a follow-up conversation about the behaviors from the day before. What we found out the next day is that this young man, who's now 18-years-old, had been getting put out of his house since he was five-years-old. At five-years-old, he learned to sleep under bridges. And during that time, who knows what he witnessed? But he talks about often how much he witnessed violence and had witnessed shootings and homicides when he would get put out of his house. So, imagine a five-year-old sleeping under a bridge, and then he witnesses probably somebody under that bridge getting assaulted or getting murdered or whatever the case may be. But he takes that trauma back home, doesn't really say anything about it, but you, but you see the level or the layers of trauma that that young person has experienced. So, then, if my reaction was to call the police based on his behavior, I would have only been traumatizing him even more. Now, there are certain instances where law enforcement is called to do what law enforcement is put in place to do, but there are other instances where we have to really understand the pain and suffering that these young people have been subjected to, to really understand the behaviors that they display and exhibit. And it's not an excuse, it's a reality. And the reality of it is, is that if we don't address it from a trauma perspective, then our young people are going to continue to be the way that they are, and the city is not going to get better. So, we have to look at the trauma that these young people have experienced from younger ages, because we deal with 16- to 24-year-olds. By the time they get to us, they've probably already experienced a lifetime of trauma for most normal people. So, we have to really address the trauma at an early age and figure out how we can be attack it from a unified front across city agencies, across programs, partners. Everybody has a responsibility. The other thing, too, is that the messaging around trauma or around the effects of trauma is very important, because a lot of our young people are vilified based on the actions that they, that they do. But nobody really takes the time out to explain, or really takes the time out to understand that these, these kids are not animals, they're not acting animalistic, they're responding to trauma that they suffered throughout their lives. And we felt, we are so quick to vilify them about their behaviors and so, we don't take the time enough to really understand them and understand where they're coming from. So, I think this bill is really important, and I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the council and to everyone present. I'm Amanda Morgan Henry. I am a native of Baltimore City. I am a licensed clinical social worker, and I am here speaking as the president of the Baltimore Legacy Chapter of Association of Black Social Workers that is here in the city. I would like to say that I appreciate the effort to bring forth this trauma response bill, and as well, I appreciate the sentiments that have been said countless times during the entire hearing, the stories of young people and older people and everyone on the spectrum of age who experienced trauma in the city. I also appreciate the effort or the intentional commitment that I heard earlier about over-representing Black and Brown people on this task force. I think that is a critical element to how we move forward. And so, I want to also reiterate that I support, we support fully a family-centered approach to the work that will be done as we move forward. I do want to offer a few recommendations for the task force. I recommend that the task force begins its work, if it's not already, and its plans to begin that work with community hearings. They need to hear from people. We are here representing organizations and agencies that work with people, but the best person to tell you about what they need is the person themselves. And so, I think that's important. Secondly, I recommend that there be a comprehensive study of the effects of trauma on communities disproportionately impacted. You know, research data is only as accurate and useful as the focus of the study, and sometimes studies are not looking at what we really need the answers to. With that said, we know that funding tends to follow the evidence and the outcomes of those studies. And so, I do want to reiterate a point that I think the sister from Wrexham Parks may have mentioned earlier. We, my third recommendation is that we identify a trauma-informed training model that is culturally relevant and reflects experiences of communities who are being served. And I say that, we use the term cultural competence a lot. I don't like that term, because we can never fully be competent in our understanding of someone else's culture. We can do things that are relevant, our actions can be relevant, but a more important term, I think, is culturally humble, because what that does is it centers and honors the people who are actually doing the work. And to the sister's point, there are a lot of people who are not clinicians and not researchers and not therapists who work and grow and impact the lives of children and people who have been traumatized every day in a positive way. And so, a culturally humble approach or a culturally humble model will actually center them as the experts, and the people who are traumatized as the experts. With that said, the final thing I want to say is that our organization is absolutely willing and want to participate on this task force. We are available, and we really, truly are, we have the resources to connect us to the clinicians of color who are really working. And all clinicians are, we see that across the city, all types of clinicians are working with our young people. But as someone who has had a private practice in this city, who has worked as the supervisor in foster care for DSS and in sex abuse for DSS and, and work with a lot of youth, oftentimes, what is culturally relevant is the young people seeing someone that looks like them across from them, and they want that and they need that presence. And so, if I can reiterate that one more time, I think that is so important. Thank you for your effort, and thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Buckley?
Good evening, everyone. The hour is late, I'm sure you all are hungry, so my comments are very brief. I am a faculty member at Coppin State University, in the Department of Social Work. I have a lot of experience, just like many of my colleagues here. My area of research interest is around fatherlessness, which is, you know, steeped in trauma in and of itself, but I'm not here based on that, even though I did cancel my class this evening for this. And I'm sure my students were not disappointed. I'm here as a really new member of this community. I've been in Baltimore City since May, and I love it here, and this issue of trauma is reoccurring. In the short amount of time that I've been here, I must say that I have also experienced what we classify to be vicarious trauma. It could be through the manifestation of hearing the police cars whiz by my home as they're en route to a crime scene. It could be hearing the whir of the helicopter overhead. It could be simply by reading the news, you know, getting those alerts that come through on the neighborhood app. But we are all experiencing trauma, and so it's for that reason, Councilwoman Cohen, that I really appreciate your bravery, and your boldness in putting this forward. So, I guess in essence, I stand here this evening as a member of your community, as a member of this community at large, because, you know, we've been using this hashtag, #WeAreBaltimore. We have to make that make sense. We really have to get boots on the ground, and address the trauma that people are experiencing across the spectrum. And I'm here wanting, needing, pleading to be a part of the resolution. Tired of talking about the problem only, we need help, we need to eradicate the problem, because in fact, we are Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that was everyone who signed up to testify. Is there anyone who didn't have an opportunity that wants to come up?
I'll do it really quickly.
All right, come on up. And just state your name for the record.
Brenda Jones Harden. I actually got skipped somehow, but I'll do this really quickly, the hour is late. My name is Brenda Jones Harden, Allison Richmond Professor of Children and Families at the University of Maryland School of Social Work, and I think this is an important bill, it represents a major step forward to addressing the impact of trauma on the people that I'm most concerned about, and that is children like Damani, and Kaylin, Tahari, the other kids who presented tonight. So, I just would like to propose two considerations to your bill, that's all. One, that it be more developmentally centered, so that you think about how a trauma lens is different depending on the age of the child. For example, I think there's a lot of emphasis on school-based mental health and supports and things like that. I'd like to suggest that we want to make sure to bring in early care and education settings, childcare, all those kinds of things that affect young children. And the only other thing I'd like to talk about, again, I'm being, I'm abbreviating a lot, is to talk about the importance of parental mental health and parenting interventions, and a lot of people have talked about intergenerational trauma, I think that's important, but really, what we know about those kind of interventions is that it really does modulate, as Jack Schonkoff talks about, the toxic stress that children might experience. So, my hope is that as you proceed with this bill, which I support wholeheartedly, that it includes these kind of interventions that address children at different developmental stages, that it include parenting interventions, and that it includes interventions that can be integrated into ongoing systems that serve children, like early care and education. So, I did it in like, one minute, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chairman Committee, Dave Von Love, Director of Public Policy, Leaders of a Beautiful Struggle. The Councilman and I, Cohen, talked about some, we already talked about some of the things I want to mention, that I want to make sure on record, that I think are important considerations as this bill moves forward, and we'll actually submit some written documentation of what I'll describe tonight. Just a few major things I want to mention. The first is that, as was mentioned earlier, this is something that has come as a result of a recognition that the institutions that have been tasked with socializing young people in our city, have been woefully inadequate at doing the job that they've been tasked with doing. The fact that, you know, this is a moment where trauma-informed care is something that has the level of support that it has demonstrates a recognition of the many limitations of the institutions that have been tasked with doing that. And I think it's important that we understand that those who are positioned as thought leaders in the sector, so when I talk about the sector, the human social service sector, whether we're talking about public health, social work, education, and the institutions that are responsible for training those professionals, one of the things that's important to recognize is that we live in a society that's structured on racism and white supremacy. And one of the ways that manifests itself is the way in which notions of Black inferiority are ubiquitous in our society. Whether it's, whether you look at institutions, you know, institutions of higher learning, where many of the professionals are white, and many of the janitorial and service staff are Black or a Brownner, whether you look at the narratives that are popularly circulated about Black youth, and about Black people in this city, and the way that that seeps into the collective consciousness of people in our community, that impacts the professionals that are tasked with serving our young people. Teresa Perry wrote a book called Young, Gifted, and Black in 2004, she's an education specialist, and one of the things she described is that prior to the civil rights movement, prior to integration, there was a period of time where the organizations and institutions responsible for socializing youth were very intentional, intentional about making sure that the young people that they were teaching and working with were fortified with a defense against the notions of Black inferiority that they were faced throughout, you know, their experience in the world. And that's something that is sorely lacking currently amongst the institutions that are doing that. The reason that's important on a conversation about trauma-informed care, is because one of the ways that notions of Black inferiority show up, is that our young people in our communities are understood primarily in terms of their suffering and trauma. And one of the ways that trauma-informed care done poorly, is that it understands the people in the communities that they work with primarily from the vantage point of their trauma, and from notions of pathology, as opposed to understanding some of the inherent genius that needs to be expanded upon as the solution to the problems, to the levels of trauma that exist. The other thing I want to say is that, as we think about this particular bill, and the idea of trauma-informed care, my hope is that the task force that is convened acts as one body of many people who are doing, I think, something similar around the city, of changing the thought leadership of those who are in charge of addressing the issues that our youth face. That much of the thought leadership has been socialized, and white supremacist methodologies of human service development, and that when we talk about trauma, we can't just talk about the environmental issues, whether it's the violence, that we see homicides, et cetera. We also have to talk about the damage that these systems have done, the systems that have been tasked with helping young people, that the trauma that those systems have done on those young people. And so, if we're not talking about that in this, then I think we're doing not only a disservice, but in fact, without addressing that, this is the type of thing that could do more harm to young people. And so, I argue, like I mentioned earlier, we'll submit to the committee some of our recommendations. We think it is essential that those professionals that comprise the task force are people who have a strong literacy and understanding the ways in which white supremacy impacts young people, and have strong cultural, culturally humble approaches, that are informed by bodies of work that acknowledge the humanity of the, of young people, particularly of young Black people and people of color in this city, in ways that traditionally the systems have not acknowledged or recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify before we close out? Okay. So, as mentioned at the beginning of this hearing, the committee's not going to vote on the bill this evening. As we've seen, there's been a lot of recommendations, amendments put forth, testimony that we want to make sure we consider. So, there will be future work sessions, voting sessions, that will be announced. We would love for all of you to come back, so stay tuned for that and those public announcements. So, as there is no further business before this committee, this hearing is now in recess until we reconvene. Thank you.